Let us pray. Oh God of wisdom and truth as this council gathers to deliberate and decide on matters so important to the present and future well-being of Mobile. Bless and guide these members through the grace of your Spirit. Help them each to set aside petty concerns that they might best serve the common good of Mobile residents and honor their purpose for which they were elected. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and liberate, just as far.
If we could, I'd ask that we would observe a moment of silence in memory of the nearly 42 individuals who have lost their lives to wildfires in California, to all of their families, and most especially to the valiant heroes in the person of our firefighters who are fighting battles all over the state. We take for granted, you know, we have our hurricanes and our rain and weather, they have those winds and those very dangerous fires, and it's really impacting people all across that region. So I'd ask that we would observe a moment of silence and ask of God's grace, and it will continue to be bestowed upon that area.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Glad to see you, January 1st, you. The rules of the council are as follows. We'd ask first that you turn off or silence all electronic devices before or upon entering the council meeting. Anyone desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance of appeal or public hearing agenda item before entering the council meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state clearly both your name and your mailing address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday prior to the Tuesday that you'd like to address the council. The business that you'd like to speak to must be pertinent and pertain to City of Mobile business. If you haven't given such notice to the city clerk's office, then you will not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is granted five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound indicating the end of four minutes. One minute will remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements ought to be made to me, the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules of the council, and again, thank you for your interest in your municipal government. May I ask the clerk?
Approval of minutes of November 6th.
Shall move, second?
Probably move the second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minnesota approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yesterday, Monday was Veterans Day. We had a wonderful Veterans Day celebration. So grateful to Pete Ream and the organization that puts it on every year. Mobile elected officials are very proud to participate in it anyway. It was a great day. This morning, we started off with the mayor's prayer breakfast, very well attended, over 900 people there, and tremendously grateful for those who attended, but also for those who weren't there, but are praying for the city of Mobile. So thank you very much for that. On another item later this morning, on one of the resolutions held over, Resolution 29, excuse me, 21-792, I'd just like to remark that we think that this action is an ill-advised action. This is another attempt to assert the power of the mayor, just like conversation or controversy involving limiting the mayor's ability to put resolutions on the city council agenda. We feel like this issue is an employment issue. We recognize the city council's ability to appoint individuals to boards, but not to appoint employees. And also, we think it's a blatant violation of the separation of powers, and that it would be very disruptive to the proper function of city government. So our hope is, is that this is something that you will not pass, and appreciate the opportunity to comment on it.
Any further announcements?
Mr. Vice President, I think it may be appropriate.
Mr. Williams?
I would, one by one, like to ask question of the administration, and exactly how would this second voice in the opinion only in resolution disrupt the conduct of business in our city?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
No, you're not a man. Mr. Vice President, I was hoping maybe we'd get an answer from the mayor on this one. If it's been brought up, I wasn't planning on to bring it up, but...
I'll have the council answer. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Well, I mean, Mr. Williams, you...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for a meeting after this meeting with you.
That works.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question, too.
Mrs. Small, and then Rich.
Yeah, I would like to know, too, because after the meeting, this resolution, the city clerk would have had read this resolution, so therefore, I would like to know from the mayor, how is it so? Especially the question that Mr. Williams had asked.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
I had the floor, Mr. Chairman, and I had asked the mayor a question.
I said we'd be glad to meet after this meeting regarding that, but, you know, when it comes to this, I've said it, is that we think this is a blatant violation of the separation of powers. I mean, it is an employment issue, and it is not having to do with the normal course of business or how business has been conducted in the past.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Small?
I still is not understanding, and again, this resolution, the city clerk would have read this resolution during this meeting. And again, I mean, if the mayor sees something for commenting, I mean, to me, should be a person to stand, especially direct the city councilman, why or why not? And again, I don't understand, I'm really, I'm interested, you know, right now, especially what the mayor is talking about after the meeting, I believe it may be too late. And again, Mr. Mayor, I would like to know exactly, since you brought this up in meeting, you know, why is this? Why is it, why do you think this is so?
So, this is a legal issue, and because it's a legal issue, that is why I would like for council to answer that question.
Again, the council did not bring it up, you brought it up. And, you know, therefore, I mean, I would like to know exactly from you, from your mouth, you know, why?
So, as legal counsel, mayor, I can explain.
And again, we asked the CEO of Mobile, why? If someone come into my business and ask me, why is this, why is that, I can tell them why is this, why is that? The mayor's the CEO of Mobile, and therefore, I'd like to hear it from the mayor.
Let me, let me ask this.
Mr. Chairman?
If you would, just restate the question.
Yes, Mr. Small?
I would like to ask the mayor, why did he make the comments of what he made, and what did he really mean about what the comments that he made, and why did he make it, where did he get that information from? And again, for our attorney can pretty much hear, because again, after this meeting, the meeting would be over, well, I mean, excuse me, the resolution would have been read, voted on, so therefore, we need to know now, especially since he had brought it up during this particular meeting.
I don't know how to make it very much than to say, according to the Zogby Act, it defines the council's powers and the mayor's powers. We believe that for you to engage someone in a contract under the guise of being an employee is a violation of those powers.
So, Mr. Mayor, why did back in 2016, was it okay for the same council with the same resolution to pass this, and you signed it? What's the difference?
That didn't happen. And let me, let me say this, 1144(c)(21) gives the council its powers.
Again, I was talking to the mayor.
1144(c)(37) is mayor's powers.
Mr. Woods, Mr. Small still has the floor, and after Mr. Small, I believe Mrs. Rich right there, once he's concluded.
Again, I'd like to ask the mayor, why back in 2016, that this was not brought up to the council, and this is the same resolution?
The resolution back then was never signed, I made an appointment.
So why was this statement was not brought in, brought up back in 2016? It was. I don't recall.
That's because that conversation happened between the lawyers, and that is why there was no resolution signed, instead, there was an appointment letter signed pursuant to 1144(c)(40), which is set out in this resolution. And so, the very same conversation happened, it just didn't happen in public. It's now happening in public.
Mr. Rich?
Thank you. I'm going to be perfectly handed, and it shouldn't surprise anybody, but could I have the reasons of why our communications director was let go?
Let me, no comment. Let me, no comment.
When I got wind of it, I knew that this council was very pleased with the level of support that we got from that individual, her talent, her expertise. And I often tell my colleagues this, and that is, I was not a fan of hiring someone, but because it was really what the council wanted, I discovered that indeed, it became a real asset to my office, in that whenever there was community event, which all of us wind of this, but it's very hard to keep up with so many wonderful things that go on. Our communications director organized us and helped get out the word, work service groups, so that our offices became a platform for them, and it became a sense of unity for this council. Even during the budget cycle, when we looked at her remuneration, we took money out of discretionary fund in order to see even some increase, and that was budgeted and put forward and accepted by the council, and when we approved the budget. So shortly thereafter, in the learning of her dismissal of her needed, I wonder whose need was, because it was certainly not projected from the group that sought her expertise and professionalism. And we have a resolution before us. I'm sorry to hear that it's something that you feel is a legal maneuver, and we are not lawyers, but of course, we work on legislation, and I see this as a legislative act, you're something that was important to this council. In losing that communication outreach in this day and age, we have a Facebook page, we are even trying to do a Facebook Live, and it's difficult when we don't have someone to help us with that, because our citizens are demanding that kind of communication from us, in a good way. If there were any concerns from the administration, it should have been made known to this council, and perhaps if there was some conflicts or some misunderstanding on what her direction was through our offices, because we were pleased. And I just hope we can solve this, and not see it as something that's a problem for one arm of government to communicate with our citizens. Your office as a mayor has a nice communications team, as you should. Nobody's denying you that aspect of communicating, because you're at the top and know all entities of city government. And we, as legislators, want feedback, and this is a way to get it, plus we want to engage our citizens, and it was a good, good tool. I hope that it's not perceived as something to go up against or to be disruptive, because it's a positive in our eyes. And I think I speak for my colleagues.
We certainly understand the necessity of the council communicating. We have a communications department. You know, we have said in the past that we would be glad to work with you to improve the communications. You know, our take on it, or my take on it, is that things have probably gotten more contentious since we had the division, I mean, since we appointed that position, and also, it came to us that when this person was being hired, hired to beat the 10th floor. So, you know, but you can shake your head and say, but that is exactly what has been going, and so, we are all about wanting for the administration and the council to work together, but we do not think this is the way to get it done.
If I could just continue and have the floor respond?
As long as we need to.
If, if that was the sense from your end of the spectrum, it was a surprise to me, because I'm just hearing it now.
Mm-hmm.
And to me, that's most unfortunate, because that was not what this council wanted from a communications specialist. And your office is extremely busy, we have, there are seven of us, and we're busy, too, but in a different angle of things, but we're, I don't, it's unfortunate that it got to that point, it didn't have to, and it shouldn't, because I saw our communications director as somebody with a great resume and a wonderful established ability to work with citizens that we all resent. And I know you have a director of your communications, but I would feel from my office that he is very busy communicating and giving out your messages coming from the 10th floor, and it's not the same as the legislative body. And it needs to be an individual that is collectively working with seven different people, and when we legislate something, that voice could be helped, and sometimes we legislate on things that the administration did not see the direction that the council took, I respect that. At the same time, getting our word out so that people understand is important. And so, I'm sorry that it got to this point, and was hoping that this legislative act that we would pass would be the tool to let us move forward and make the repairs that we need to make, as far as our offices are concerned.
Again, we are willing to work with the city council to make sure that your message gets out in a more robust and engaging way than possibly has been done in the past, but we still disagree that this is the correct path forward with this resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Richardson?
According to the Zogby Act, all powers of the city, 1144(c)-11 says, "All powers of the city shall be vested in the city council." We had to big scrape, moan, and we don't have to do that, because we have all power. You understand what I'm saying? All power. Now, it says, 1144(c)(37)-2, and I won't, if you've got a pen, you need, if you've got a camera, you need to turn it on. The mayor can appoint and remove all officers and employees. Y'all got that? Except those appointed by the council. I want to read it one more time. 1144(c)-37, paragraph 2, "The mayor can appoint and remove all officers and employees, except those appointed by the council." So what we hear today, that the council cannot appoint, well, why did the Zogby Act say we could appoint? The mayor fired somebody that was hired to work for the council, and he said, "We don't have the right to appoint him, and nobody is using," he's saying, "Because they have done, done that before." Well, we have never had a person to get five votes and not be the council president. We're going down a different road today. We're not going down yesterday's road, we're going down today's road. First, it said we have all power, then it came back and told us we have the power to appoint employees. And it also says we have the power to set the salary for the employees we appoint, that the mayor has the power to set the salary of those he appoints, that we have the power to set the salary for those we appoint. Now, if the mayor's legal document has a problem with that, we don't. We don't have no problem with that. It's in the Zogby Act. So we have the power to do that, it's absolutely no doubt. We have the power to appoint someone to handle our communications, to help us communicate with our citizens, those things we are doing for them, and how they can help us do. To keep a connection between the Mobile City Council and those people that we represent in, that's what this person is doing, is keeping us plugged up, keep the connection going. And it seems like this person was doing too good a job, that she got a call earlier one morning and said, "You are fired." And unless we do something, I want you to consider this, do you think the president has the authority to pick employees for the Congress? No, no. You think the governor has the authority to pick employees for the legislators? No! And the mayor is saying, "I want the authority to pick anybody that worked for y'all, so because I can go in your office and say, 'You fired, you fired,' now try to operate now, council, because I don't find all your employees, and blah, 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 you can't appoint nobody." No, no. Zogby Act says all power is vested in the council, and we have the power to appoint.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dave, again, Mr. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 1144(c) says, "All legislative powers of the city, including the powers vested in it by this chapter and by laws general and local of the state, are vested in the council." Legislative powers. It then goes on to enumerate the powers which are granted to the council, which don't include hiring people or entering into contracts without the mayor's approval. And then, it says, "Neither the council nor any of its members shall direct or request the appointment of any person to or his removal from office, or in any manner take part in the appointment or removal of officers or employees in the administrative service..."
Right.
"...of the city."
Administrative service. The administrative service, not council.
It's, please. Now, I wasn't going to make my comments now, but since everybody else is making theirs, I'll make mine, too. I have no, I have no complaint about the lady who filled the job. But what is the issue here? What's before us today is not whether the lady did a good job or a bad job, or whether the council needs a communications assistant or director. The question is whether the council has the authority to enter, whether the council has the authority to approve of this contract without the mayor's consent, and whether, if it has, I doubt, for the reasons I've already said, it should take this light, it should take the action in light of the practical consequence of such an action. Again, while I have great respect for the council's attorney, lawyers from time to time disagree, and I disagree here, I do not think the council has the authority under the Zogby Act to direct, to either hire an individual or enter into a professional services contract without the consent of the mayor. Secondly, I think this is going to precipitate an agreement with the mayor that will end up in court, where the taxpayers will have the opportunity to pay for not only one, but two sets of attorneys. And I think this issue ought to be resolved outside of court and in a conciliatory fashion. And finally, I think it sets a disturbing precedent, I thought what we did last week set a disturbing precedent, I think this sets a disturbing precedent, because what this does, if it makes it all the way through, is it allows the council to hire as many people as the council wants, not just this one person, but as many people as the council wants, and I think anyone out there in there know that's going to end. So I'm opposed to this for those three reasons. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
And Mrs. Rich, and Mr. Gregory.
You can let Ms. Gregory go before me since I spoke.
And Mrs. Rich. I'll let Ms. Gregory go, go behind Ms. Gregory.
Since we have been talking about legal issues, I wonder if Ms. Cochran, the council attorney, would give us her legal opinion on why we have this resolution on the agenda today and cite the law? And also, I have a question about general government rules, and if that's what you were using for this, or...
The item on the agenda...
You can put the mic right up to your pocket.
The, the item on the agenda is a professional services contract. It's not an appointment, it's not a hiring of an employee. It's a contract between the city of Mobile and Ms. Steinfeld's to provide communication services. The term of the contract runs concurrent with the term of the council. So the legal issue is, who has the power to contract? The power to contract is a legislative power. You will notice that every resolution this council passes authorizes and directs the mayor to sign all contracts. So if this were an employee, I would be in agreement with Ms. Cochran. The mayor has his authority, which is prescribed by the Zogby Act. The council has authority. And the Zogby Act and the general law of the state provides that the power to contract is a legislative power. All you have before you is a professional services contract for a communications officer, and you have the power to adopt that.
To follow up, though, Ms. Cochran, if the council has the power to contract, but the mayor signs the contract, and basically, he decides whether or not people will be paid or whether those contracts will be honored, so if we followed through today, and if this goes to court, we win, the mayor could still stop it, because basically, he wouldn't have to pay her, even though we passed a contract.
The resolution before you gives the mayor 10 days in which to sign the contract. In the event he fails to sign the contract, it authorizes the council chairman, vice chairman, to sign the contract.
Okay. Just a couple other things, if I, you know, back in the day, I worked for a former mayor, and that was well before social media. We did put out news releases here and there, but I can never imagine myself writing a news release that combined mayor's quotes with council quotes if the council defeated a measure that the mayor wanted. Now, George, George, you able to do that? You might be able to say, "Here's what the mayor says, the council disagrees, and here's what they say," in the body of the same release. But I think that would be very difficult. As a PR person, especially working in government, when there are two sides sometimes to every issue or to every story, you have to expect different sides to those issues, and sometimes you don't like what the other side is saying. Welcome to PR, you know, that's what it's all about. You know, that's, that's what it's all about. So, if that's the beat the tent floor, if that's a contention, I just think we need to all just understand that's kind of the way it is. And know for a fact that many times, when Marion was working with us, she toned down what a lot of people in this council wanted to put out. And you can thank her for that. So, I would like to see us work this out. We don't necessarily have to go to court. We don't have to have this contention. It's just unneeded that we have to go this route to do this. When it's very simple to just renew her contract, and any issues you've got, you come to us. And vice versa. Because I cannot see George and Laura and that team following me around at my meetings and putting together community meetings for me. I was right in the middle of a big project, you know, that I've been working on and need to fulfill, and now I don't know how I'm going to get it done. Because my help is gone. You know, there are some things that I'm just not capable of doing. I, I don't know how to put together a PowerPoint. I don't have the time to be out beating the bushes and sending letters and postcards and rounding up things, you know? And it's a new day and time. When I worked for Mayor Dowd, this wasn't an issue. And I did reach out to council people. People would call and want the mayor to do an interview. And I would say, "Well, no, that's Thomas Sullivan's district. That's Reggie Copeland's district. Let's get them to do the interview." That was a long time ago. Doesn't work that way anymore. Would love it if it did, but I just don't think that's going to happen. So, if we can make this work, that would be the thing to do. I hate that we have this on the agenda to do this. But if you would tell us, "Don't worry about it, we're going to fix it," I think that would settle things today.
I did say that we'd be glad, when I met with Vice President Manzi 10 days ago or so, I said, "We'd be glad to discuss this issue," and that is the communication issue. But not involve the individual and the specific job and the way we were going about it. I fully understand the need for you to communicate. And I do understand that it's a different day and time, and we can work with you. But I would suggest that to do that, that we probably need to sit down and let us show you what we think that we can do, and then you can make your mind up after that.
Are y'all going to assign Laura to us? That'd be nice. We'll take her.
I don't know the answer just yet. I think that it would, we would need to sit down and discuss what is the best way to do that. And, and I'm uncertain at this point, but I am open-minded to figuring out a way to help you do a better job of communicating. I'm very open-minded to helping you do that.
Mr. Chairman?
But not as it's laid out today.
Mrs. Rich, and Mr. Small.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Right, going around the second, second time. We have a separation of powers for purpose, and the offices are completely separated. It's a check and balance. Having a communications tool from this arm of government is essential. And having someone that is answers to the council, because we cannot direct any other city employee. We are prohibited. We can inquire, we can question, but the people that work under the City of Mobile's offices, other than the clerk's office, do not take direction from council. So, therefore, you have this automatic wall up that it's, if somebody who really takes their direction from the mayor in communications, we are not always going to agree on everything. And that's a good thing, because that's democracy in action. And so, I, I just think that this tool that has been placed as a legislative act is a good thing. It truly is a good thing. We have been very comfortable with the individual. We have made no bones about that. That's why we were each really taken back that there was something wrong with what was going on from our communication side of the aisle. And, and Ms. Gregory is absolutely correct. There were more times than not that there was a, a very unfriendly feeling about an incident or legislative act, that she was able to get us to come together in a more cohesive, more civilized, because of her communication ability. But, but, right, less inflammatory, however you want to say it. And the thing is, that is excellent for this council. And because each, each of us use our office and go and give our own words out. But we took this as a collective means to, to work as a team, which I think is helpful to city government. And at the same time, we all had different projects in our district. I had a tile project. I'm lost without working with, with the person that was so instrumental in round one. And I'll have a Christmas function, and I'll have holiday things and community meetings. And the people that work for your office under your communications guidance, I don't see that absolutely being the best tool for this council. And the separation of power is so important on not giving directions to your administration that work for you. It's very important that we not blend that. And I do not see a problem with us having a consultant and, and somebody who can, we can turn to, to work with, that we are collectively very comfortable with, which is, that was not an easy thing to have happen either. It took time. But if there were problems, it needed to come to this council, because we could have helped make a difference. And I didn't see that as anything that was personal or, or politically tripping up. It was different opinions. And like I said, I think we need to thrive on that, not run from them.
Mr. Chairman, if I may address those comments, and from a legal nature, I do not want this lost in the conversation. What Mrs. Rich just said is, is in part accurate. But what people forget, and the system, Mrs. Cochran's comments as well, what people forget is, is we're not talking about a contract today that doesn't, doesn't a former employee. What we're talking about is somebody who was appointed under the authority of the mayor, and then now is being brought back. So, Zogby specifically forbids the council or any of its members to direct a subordinate of the mayor. But it also forbids any council member to appoint or take part in any way the appointment. So, we know in multiple public and private meetings, that part of the law has been violated. Going forward today is a continued part of, part of violation. If this does go to court, then people will have to testify under oath, under oath, about that violation, which is an impeachable offense. So, what we're trying to do is prevent that from happening. That is part and parcel of what is happening today.
No, go ahead. Mr. Small first, then Mr. Richardson, and then Mr. Davis, and then, where were you? Oh, okay, well, Mr. Small, then Mr. Richardson, and then eventually I want to have something. If y'all will let me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The resolution before us today, parts of it reads that the, that the, of certain tasks relating to the management of communication services and resources to connect citizens, community organizations, and businesses to local government by increasing public awareness of programs, services, and activities in a timely, transparent, and professional manner. Nowhere in this resolution, I read that it's the person is designed to beat the tent floor. City clerk staff is already short-staffed it. And now, we talk about seven individuals that seek and asking for help. So, with the seven individuals that's up here seeking and asking for help, we are making our city clerk staff more handicapped. So, because, because we are now handicapped, because we are lacking, lacking of help. Now, this is a conversation from CJ to Mayor Stimson. Back in 2013, Mayor Stimson, I came to you and I told you that I was not trying to fight you in no kind of way. I don't have time to fight you, and that's not what I'm down for, is to fight you. But you campaigned on transparent. I mean, is it okay just for your office, just to transparent to the city and not for the city council, not to transparent to its citizens that it represent? I mean, the individual that have represented, I mean, this particular job, DIP is in a transformation point that they would like to see some things, and this individual working on some things. I'm not trying, down here trying to beat you, Mayor Stimson, in no kind of way. I don't get nothing from it. I'm down here to present and fight for the citizens of District 3. Oh, Zogby Act keep on coming up and up, even about your attorney, you know, up here to hollering about the Zogby Act. My question is, do we do pits and choosing of the Zogby Act? Because last time I checked, and I'm looking at your administration, you violating the Zogby Act. Your administration don't even look like the City of Mobile, and the Zogby Act clearly states that. And this is not just happened on this term, it happened on the last term. I'm very disturbed at this whole situation, Mayor. I, I'm very disturbed. And being a Christian man, I, I just don't know. I'm not even questioning your Christianity, but I, I just don't understand, why are we at this particular point? Only thing the council is just asking for is just help. We not trying to be handicapped. I mean, you took away our help, didn't give us no type of forewarning whatsoever, but it's okay to have a whole tent floor full of staff members up there. We haven't even brought that, that to the floor yet. About how many people that you had just put in different places and not even became or came before council before we even vote on them. So, talking about the Zogby Act, the Zogby Act is being violated in many ways. I hear that the city employees talking about repercussion, repercussion, repercussion. And I even questioned several times of the city employees, you know, are they just exaggerating? Are they just being dramified? But to me, it seemed like the council is now seeking repercussion because of some ways that we had seek actions. Again, Mayor Stimson, I'm not down here trying to fight you. I'm down here to speak up on behalf of the citizens of this district. But again, this is not transparent. This is not what you had campaigned on back in 2013, Mayor. You said that you would work with the city council, sending somebody from your office to the night floor, talking about working with us? That's not separation of power. That's not what the Zogby, Zogby was designed for. That's not how city government is designed. I'm going to ask you, Mayor, to look into this, pray about the situation, and I'm going to do this likewise. But again, Mayor, you the CEO of this city, but the way that you leading us, this council, the staff of the city that's coming down here complaining about it, the staff that's complaining behind closed doors. God bless us, but you had to do right. You had to treat us how we want to be treated. And Mayor, how you treating or trying to treat this council, it just ain't right.
Mr. Chair, real quick, I just want to make sure that we all adhere to the fact that this is not a mayor bashing session, that we need to be respectful of the man who is the CEO of this city, who was voted in by everyone in this city. We want him to be respectful of us, and so we too need to treat him with respect. So, let's please not let this go off the rails. Discussion is one thing. We ask the people who come before us to be respectful, not call names. So, let's just make sure that we honor what we ask everyone to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Richardson.
Okay, it seemed like to me we were just threatened by the mayor's legal representative about going to jail. It seemed to me that what is, what they're trying to create is an entrapment.
That's why I said something.
Entrapment means we don't go ahead on and contract with anybody, but let us send you somebody. And when you give them an order, we gonna, we gonna, we gonna charge you with a misdemeanor and put you off council. Because council members cannot give direction to administrative employees. But we gonna send you somebody, hoping that you'll give them some sort of direction. Then we gonna accuse you of giving administrative employees direction, and we gonna take you to court and, and, and charge you with a misdemeanor, and you will no longer be able to serve on the council. I say, say, "No, sir. We don't want you to send us nobody, because we can't give them any direction." Why would we want you to give us somebody we can't even, so we'd like for you to go to Trinity Gardens and do that? That's direction. We, we, we can't do that. No. The mayor has 94 contracted employees that didn't come before this council, and only the council can contract. We are trying to get, not 94, 984. One. Seven of us is one mayor and seven council members. The seven of us want one, that we want to contract right to us. The mayor saying, "No, because we can send you somebody, but you can't tell them nothing." You can't tell, you can't give them no direction, because you can be dismissed. We just heard that, we just heard that threatening statement from the mayor's attorney of what they could do if we give an employee direction. We don't need nobody sent to us, that we can be removed from our office for giving them directions. We don't need legal department of the City of Mobile to give us any legal advice. We have our legal attorney, and she set forth the basis by which this resolution was carved out, and it's, and it's steep in the law. We have the power to contract. The mayor can't contract. Only the council can contract. To tell us, you, only the council can contract, we have a contract before us to tell us, "Is legal for you to vote on a contract?" And can't nobody contract but the, the... That's not true. It is not illegal for us to contract. It is not illegal for us. And based on what we have heard here, if we want somebody to help us, if it is to be, it is up to me. If we want somebody to help us, we're going to have to take a move, make our own move. Because if we're waiting on a move to be made somewhere else for somebody to help us, we'll be, we'll be waiting until hell freezes over, if that's what we're waiting for. We gonna have to take our own initiative to get us somebody to help us do what we know we need to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to say that if you think there is a violation, then you need to send me a memo. I, I've heard that articulated before. I think I understand what you, what you're saying about it. I think I disagree with it. But nevertheless, you know, legal matters often turn on analysis of constitutional law, state law, attorney general opinions, the language of the statute, and then, most importantly, the facts. And so, if you actually have a specific complaint, it would be very helpful, and Mr. Woods and I work very well together, and I think we both have a lot of respect for our experiences that we bring to, to any legal issue. So, I, I would just respectfully request that if you believe that the Mobile City Council has sidestepped, that rather than make a public declaration, just send me a memo and back it up with law statutes and facts, a legal opinion that can be relied upon. That's all I ask.
Let me say this, Mr. Chairman. And what I'm saying, I'm saying, because many times, I'll make comments, and then someone will say, "Well, you never told us." So, I wanted to say that in a public meeting where it can be heard publicly. And so, first, the mayor doesn't have any contracted employees, zero. He is appointed. Second, second, what I'm referring, referring is the employee we're talking about in this contract, or the former employee, was appointed by the mayor. If I'd wanted to create some subterfuge, that'd be done already. That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm saying...
What I'm saying clearly is, there was an employee who was dismissed by the mayor, okay? And then publicly, multiple council members asked for the reappointment of that person. When that was denied, understand that that was a violation of 1144(c)(21) subsection 7 that says you cannot do that. You can't do, do that. That's what I'm talking about. It says you can't participate in any, the removal or appointment, asking to do so. What I'm saying is, is this document, this contract, is a continuative of that. And I don't want it to be a surprise, is, as Mr. Day said, if we have to go forward and go into court, that that point gets brought up.
Mr. Chairman, whenever, whenever it's my turn.
Well, isn't it great, great in a country where we can do this without, without fear of our lives are, of, even though there's threats going around, isn't it great? Now, I'm serious about that, folks. I think it's a monumental day when, when this council and mayor, all the extraordinary, can have a discussion that I think is an appropriate discussion, that I think the people of our city need to understand, that we can have disagreements. We need to continue to communicate. I'm disappointed in the communications before now on this subject, but I, but I'm hopeful with what may happen in the future. And I think that goes for all employees and all people who participate in, in our government, none excluded. There is a separation in power. And then there, there is a judicial branch that decide which one right. And every time that we go to court, you know, we talk about suing the mayor, or the mayor talks about suing us, that's really what we're talking about in common language. It is a difference in legal opinion, that's all it is. And we shouldn't threaten each other with removal or impeachment, or even implicate that that is a possibility, if we're not serious about that. I don't think that anybody in this room, well, I'm not gonna speak for anyone, wants the council removed from office. And I won't speak for everyone else, I'll speak for myself, and I don't want the mayor removed from office. This combination in the last five years has produced incredible things, but I do think it's time for us to go to court. And I think it's for a, for a completely unbiased opinion of our judicial system to talk about this ancient law that has created our government and needs adjustment. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
I'm on. Any further comments? Mrs. Rich?
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate your willingness to let me have the floor again. In, in 2016, the council passed a pretty similar resolution on hiring. After we did interviews with people, you'll recall, we, we really opened it up to the community to say we needed this kind of resource, and we interviewed people. We had a lot of candidates, and, and the current candidate that we're trying to get back was one that rose to the top for multiple reasons. I remember there was an issue, issue the council was trying to get passed at the time in 2016, and what happened then was a dialogue that said that there would be no hiring of this individual unless we dropped where the council was going with that initiative. And I was very disappointed about that, and it had to do with our, the logo, to celebrate Mobile, because that had been, come from the bottom up. And again, I, I see this as something that I don't want, want to go to court, because I think it can be cured with this resolution, but that was very disturbing to me, that this council had worked towards getting an individual, we were pleased with that individual, they had accepted and ready to go. And if, if that's the type of play that will go on with individuals that the council needs in order to, to do a good job as a council member and communicate, that's something that really has to be resolved and not allowed, or if it is allowed, then council would have to just adjust. But to me, that's a real problem in the balance of government, where the entity that does manage the muscle of government, if the council needs support, if, if any of the people in clerk's office that we could not function without, technically work for the mayor of Mobile, we're not technically supposed to give direction, I think they made a mistake in the Zagby bill when they wrote it, because they didn't say clerk's office, they just said the clerk, and that, that's a grave error, because the clerk's office is the communicator, they keep the minutes, they keep the archives, they keep mailings moving. And we are similar in nature as legislators, the communicators, the advocates, and the outreach of citizens, because, because one of us represents every citizen in our district each time we vote. They don't always agree with us, but we do the best we can, and communication is the tool. So as we are today in this day and age with Facebook, like I already said, again, if the contract is going to be held over because of initiative that the administration wants, that was a bad start to begin with, and now we've come to this point, and it really is not a good scenario. I, I just, I just think we'll take our advice from our council. Hate hearing about impeachment, or pending impeachment, or however it was worded, I don't want to overstate it, but it was something that we were skidding into impeachment. And no one is trying to do that. We're trying to repair what we feel was an administrative error, and we have a tool, and hopefully this council will have five. If they don't, I'd have to give it up, but I'm hoping that there's still five, or even six or seven, that say that this is a separation of power, this is an important communication tool, which is the entire office of council. It's what we do every single day when we go about our business, and we legislate, and the mayor is the one who organizes that. So I've said my piece. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rich?
I just want, best, I want you to know that in the Zagby Act, 1144(c)-24, talks about the office of the city clerk, it is in the Zagby Act. The point is that the council has not taken action to create the office of the city. We don't need nobody, we don't need to beg nobody. All power, they say, power is in the hands of the Mobile City Council. Next week can create the office of city clerk. It's already in the design. And I would just like to ask a question to our attorney, Ms. Cochran, do you have a contract to serve as our attorney?
I do.
Is that contract between your office, you and the city council?
My office and the City of Mobile.
City of Mobile, but it's done by the city council?
Yes. I, I report, Ricardo Woods and I represent the same, the City of Mobile.
Right.
The only difference between us is that his duties require him to take direction from the mayor. My duties require me to take direction from you, so we each have our sphere of operation.
But you, you're getting down to it.
Yeah.
We voted on you, and you take your direction from us?
That is correct.
And the question we're, we're trying to, what we're trying to put on, what we're trying to vote on today, this person will do the same thing. Will report to us just like you, but to say we can't do, we've already done it. You delivering proof. We've already done it. And we gonna, we want to create a position for another person to report to us, so nobody can come to our office, or call them up in the wee hours of the morning. See, you are fired. We want to put an end to that foolishness, and the only way to do that is to hire somebody All right?
I, I have listened intently to all of my colleagues. And when I, when I look at the time that we have spent on this subject humorfully, if you add up the worth of our time, you probably have gone past this employee's yearly salary and just what we expended talking about this issue at this point. And it reminds me so much of Ralph Crandam and Alice Crandam, the honeymooners. Five years into this stage, we should not be here.
Yeah.
I want you to hear this now. This is some six month, seven month, eight month kind of behavior, in my opinion. We have spent five years, 60 months working, working with another, and have done great things, transformative things, things that are, that have brought the city light years ahead in some respects than we were when we first took office, back in 2013. And a lot of that credit I would ascribe to the guidance we've received from having an individual in this position. And I heard some commentary about it, trying to beat, beat the floor. That didn't even our goal, we're one team. It'd be like the offense and the defense trying to beat one another on Alabama on Saturday. You put the uniform on, you suit up, you get on the field, and you play for Team Mobile. And that's what I figure I'm doing. So it isn't, I'm trying to outscore the mayor, the mayor's trying to outscore me. Most of these projects that I'm working on has his name on it as well as mine. Now, a lot of this got to do with credit. C-R-E-D-I-T. Who shall get the credit? Whose name's gonna ring out, who can beat their chest the hardest? Well, it ought to be all of us collectively as a team, all eight of us happy to see the city doing things that we've never done before. And if, if any credit is given, let it be given to the team, because the mayor can't do without us, and he needs to realize it, and we can't do it on him. So I don't understand why we, why we have to go this route, that route, the judicial route, when it's, it would appear to me that on nearly $1.2 billion worth of city money over, over, over five years of service, we spent over $1.2, $1.3 billion. We have been able to realize and to compromise and to build consensus on all of that, but we get down to this one little issue, and we can't find consensus, and we can't find compromise. She was a great help, I'm not calling her name, because I don't want my, I'm proud of her, 36 years, in November it'd be 36 years, I've never had to step aside Metro Jail, I'm not trying to go over there today, and administration is threatening that. So I'm not calling her name. I'm not having my mama come and bail me out of nowhere. But this issue is too minute of an issue for us not to be able, and it's not that it hadn't, that we haven't tried. I've tried. I hear, I hear a lot of people criticize all that they have spent, yes, I have. I, me and the mayor have met two or three times on this particular issue. He has his opinion, I have mine. We're a stalemate, which is why this is on, this is, which is why this is on the agenda. I can't think of, I don't know how many times, I can't think of how many times the person in that position helped to tone down the tenor of this council. Over and over. And yet, they'll be painted with this brush that they were contentious. Well, it takes two to be contentious, and nobody on the other side is losing anything. If anything, they'll be an added two. There's seven of us with one person. I, I just am, I am disappointed that we're, we're at juncture, because all of us have business backgrounds. All of us are rational, reasonable people, and this should not have risen to this occasion. But we are where we are. And I know the time is far spent, but I'm gonna cast a vote, and I want to cast an informed vote. So I'm going back to our city council attorney. If you could, I want you to give us, you've heard what the administration has said relative to their thoughts on the appropriateness of this action. And I would like your response to their thoughts, as it relates to the appropriateness of our ability to move forward with this action and not be...
Put in jail.
Well, I was finding a real fancy way to say it, but that's what my colleague have just nipped it in the bud, because what they've done is they, they put the bar right here to say, if you cross this line, then this is one of the ramifications of crossing it. And I'd like you to address all of those issues.
Well, I can't address thoughts, and I can't address opinions, and I can't address allegations, and I can't address talk. If there is a legal opinion in writing, based on facts, and supported by case law, I will be happy to consider that. I was asked whether council could enter into a professional track for communication services, and it is a professional service as a matter of fact, because the ability and skill of the person providing those services is unique, it is not a position that could be filled by an employee. I don't know what happened in 2016, and I don't know how I got off the rails, but this is the quintessential professional services contract. The power of contracting is vested in the council, and until I see something in writing, or a case I haven't read, or a law I don't know about, I can't shadow box.
All right.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Cochran. I just want to make certain, because the comments, allegations, statements that he's making, they're making it contingent on the same law you're reading.
Correct.
You follow me?
I, I think...
So my point is, this is my point. You're reading the same law Mr. Woods is reading, and after reading said law, you disagree with his conclusion.
Well, he actually hasn't given a legal opinion, because the definition of a legal opinion is something that is in writing and based on a stated set of facts. Mr. Woods has not rendered a legal opinion to this city. Now, he may have written something, but he didn't give me a copy of it.
Gossip.
And I have put my opinion in writing to the council that the legislative authority is vested in the council. And I believe Mr. Woods has seen that opinion.
Let me make sure, two things. One, I disagree with that assessment, but two, I've told you my opinion. And so let me be clear about it. Let me be clear, okay? What I'm saying is, in a public meeting, all council members asked for the reappointment of an employee that had been dismissed. Once this goes forward to court, those same council members will have to testify under oath, and at that point, testifying under oath, you will reveal what you've done. So 1144(c)(21) subsection 7, forbids, it's in writing, and it's in front of you, forbids it's any city council member from doing so. At that point, once you testify under oath, there will be no hiding from that. And I'm, what I'm pointing to you is 1144(c)(21) subsection 7, I think it's been read this morning. You can read it out loud if you want to. And so this is not a threat. I'm telling you this so that it does not sound as a surprise to you when that time comes.
Can I, can I ask a question? Thank you. I'm a little, I hear what you're saying, I'm taking it very seriously. The, the action that took place was a surprise, surprise council. So at the next meeting, it was a pre-conference, I don't think, maybe it was discussed also in this meeting, but the public meeting, so I understand. It was dialogue, wanting to know what had happened, why, and could it, could there be a change of heart, so to speak? Could, could this person be bought back? But the legislative act now in front of us is two separate things. One was, and you're saying at the time we should have been told that we were violating, if that, if, if you're so adamant about the fact that now it can, can be against us, because that's past tense, that we had those discussions.
That's right, but I'm not your lawyer.
Okay, but I want to, I want to get where you're coming from, because it's different. How, how are the two tied together when a council gets a disruption in its behavior pattern that was... that was used to having this kind of tool available, and then asks the administration, who we knew had made their decision to get, let go this person for whatever reasons, we didn't know the reasons, did not think...
That's why, let me explain to you why it's clear, and I know everybody doesn't seem to understand this, but one, the employee was an appointee of the mayor. That is how the mayor made the dismissal.
And that's gone.
Number two.
You get that.
Number two, the commentary made about it was by the council, which happened. Three, what you're doing is bringing about in a contract what is putting that person back in the same place to do the same thing for the same people. It's a continuation of the same act. It's a legal fiction.
But we're not, we're not, we've cured it because we've asked the mayor to sign it, like all contracts, after we approve a contract, professional contract, like we do with engineers, we do this all the time, and the mayor signs it if he doesn't like it, he's got ten, he could veto, send it back, or we have a tool in this legislative act that says our council, whoever is acting as our president, will sign it, and it becomes the law. And it becomes a contract that is affirmed. So it's two separate, you're blending this whole action together, but the council legislatively, and we are separate from all of you administratively for reasons.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
So, what we're seeing here is, we're not blending anything. It is two separate acts, okay? But it is part and parcel, the same mission, the same motive, okay? And so, it's a continuation. You have part one, part two. Let there be no mistake here, we're talking about the same person. So don't let that derail the conversation. We're talking about somebody who was an employee, no longer an employee, and now you want that person to have a professional service contract for the same scope of employment. And so, that's the first part that's wrong with it. The second part is, contracting is a two-part process that requires both the council and the mayor to act. Now, Mrs. Rich is right, the mayor doesn't have to sign this, but where our city's going based on this conversation is we will end up in court where the city is expending money on multiple lawyers to deal with this issue. At that same time, and let me say this again, people will be asked to testify under oath.
Ms. Chairman, I would like to provide some relief to those people who went to talk to Mayor Stansfield regarding bringing and employing you back. Because Mr. Woods is saying, you shouldn't have done that, and if we go to court, we're gonna take you out. Let me provide you some relief. Go and get the 2016 organization chart that was drawn up by the mayor and his staff and was put before this council, and you had a communications employee, and you drew her directly under the Mobile City Council saying, this person should report to the Mobile City Council. And as a person reported to me, I can tell this person anything I want to. You the one did it. If you wanted that person to report to you, why didn't you draw a line with her going straight to you? No, you went over here under the Mobile City Council, and you drew a line straight down to the Mobile, from that position, straight down to the Mobile City Council saying, this person would report directly to the Mobile City Council, and now we shouldn't have told her nothing. No, we are on legal grounds. What we voted on made it legal. You can't make it illegal because you don't have no vote. We have voted this to be legal. When we voted on that organization chart, we made a legally responsible to report to us, and only you can't make that illegal. I say, let's go to court, I'll be glad to testify. Call my name, you ring our spring.
All right, guys.
I'm ready.
Any further comments from the council?
Let's cut it off.
Any further comments from the council?
Yeah, let's just move now.
From the administration? If not, let's continue.
Before we do that, Mr. Vice Chairman, I've got just one question for the mayor. You know, in these political laws of campaigning and of messages being sent, whether the guy's campaigning for state or for local or national office, he has to say, after his message has been given by everybody else, that he approves the message. And in a friendly way as I can, I just ask if the mayor approved the message that was sent by Mr. Ricardo Woods.
Yes. I mean, it's a legal, to me, at this stage, it's a legal matter. You're listening to your counsel, I'm listening to Mr. Woods about his counsel. But I would also say to you that, as I said a moment ago, I'm very interested in working with the city council to improve the communications from y'all, and I would be glad to entertain those conversations to see how we could go forward.
Thank you.
But if this is the action, then I think it becomes a legal action.
Mr. Mayor, I hear exactly what you're saying. You're saying you agree with it as long as some might agree too, and there are gonna be moments where we disagree, and it's gonna take that person to have the capabilities to communicate their disagreement in as best an agreeable manner as possible. And I just don't see the situation being where someone from your floor comes to us because I see exactly what Mr. Richardson is saying. We won't really be in a position to give direction to that employee. And it would be different if previous persons that held that position were negative and contentious and were a detraction to the relationship between the ninth and 10th floors. Our relationship is where it is because of us, not because of anybody who's been in the employ of us. It's where it is because of us. That's one of the reasons why I've asked Councilwoman Gregory to put forward some semblance of a retreat, because we need a reset. And let me just let the citizens know that even with the stammering, it has not stopped the business of the city. The business of the city is moving forward. But could we do better in the relationship category? Yes, but it's got to be a two-way street. It's not the council giving orders to the mayor, and it's certainly in the mayor giving orders to the council. We've got to work together as a team. And I think this is one item where I'm hopeful we are able to sit down and really iron this out without having to go down the road that it appears that we're going down.
I would like to point out that for, ever since the former city government, there's never been a communications person for the city council. In the spirit of trying to get along with the council, we agreed, you know, to make the appointment in an effort to better the communications. At this point, we do not think that that's bettered the communications, but I'm not willing to just give up and say that we can't improve the communications, but it won't be through along this pathway that we do.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think I say to that, in the history of this former government, there've never been a bunch of positions that you've appointed.
Ninety-four.
With all due respect, and I'm not saying that they're needed positions, that they don't do functions, that make this city great, but we're gonna compare our one employee over the history of the thirty-some odd years of this government. It's been, in the history of this government, there's been a whole bunch of other appointed positions that do great work. I'm not knocking their work, let them work, let them do great work, but let's make certain that we understand that we've had one person, and there's a litany of others compared to Mr. Davis?
Thank you. I'd just like to pick up on something that Mr. Williams said, which is absolutely true, is that this is an opportunity for our citizens to watch the sausage get made.
Mobile County sausage.
And it's never very attractive, but we live in a country where the law commands that the people get to see the sausage get made. And I'll tell you what, this has been a wonderful educational experience today in sausage making, and I hope everybody enjoys it. This is what you get when you have it in a government. You know, I would, my suggested course of action would be for us to lay this over for two or three weeks and see if something can be worked out for the mayor, with the mayor, that will be amenable to all parties. Thank you.
Is there any interest, Mr. Pardon me?
No.
Ma'am, City Clerk, Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved, second?
Probably motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have the appeal of Jeffrey and Pamela Kent concerning the Architectural Review Board's denial of the application regarding the retention of Redding Gate and Planters at 1654 Government Street.
Motion to lay over to D. Seven and Fourteenth.
Second, sorry.
Fourth.
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 Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Sean Bivens.
You sure you want to follow all of that?
Nobody leave. Everybody listen to what I gotta say. I am a friend of the city of Mobile. I know people in high places and haven't had to call on them for something that I don't need to call anymore. However...
Ms. Bivens.
We have a problem at 1561 Van Dorn Street in Laysville. Sean Bivens. 1561 Van Dorn Street, Mobile, Alabama, where we moved there in 1952. We have a problem, and it's not because our councilman has not tried to rectify it. We have, I was, I've been on travel, and when I came home, some neighbors down on the other end of the street have again moved their RV across the street from where I live and where every time I open my door, I gotta look across the street at their RV. We've called 311. I think that you all have taken them to court. It's an ongoing thing, and I'm at a point now where I'm wondering what they have on somebody where they can park that RV. Van Dorn Street is not a trailer park, and it's not an RV park. If they lived out there in Lansdowne or out there on Tuthill Lane, they would not be able to pull that RV up right after Mardi Gras and park it there and expect people not to say anything about it. And we're tired. We are tired of that couple parking that RV. It's there now. You all have pictures. The lady at 311 says, well, this was last week, and I'm not calling them back anytime soon. Well, they're behind the driveway, and it's backed up all to the fence, the front fence, because where it's parked now, you can't build a house there legally. And I didn't call, and I don't call, and no one should call 311 to hear the lady say and make excuses for someone who is violating a city ordinance. Tired of that. It's an RV. The city begged those people not to build that house on that small lot before they move back down here. The city engineers or whatever begged them, that you don't have enough space, you don't have enough room. This has been going on now maybe three, four years. They move it, two or three months later, they put it back. I came back to my home from a trip, it's all their part, and we're tired of it. Most of the people who live from Stewart Avenue and Van Dorn Street down to Houston Lane, Houston Street, further down on that end, the west end, are homeowners. We're homeowners. We don't have any place to go yet. You know, and depending on the situation with, you know, some other things going on, we want that RV tail, RV moved from our street. You know, let the lady who works at 311, let her move it out there to her house on her street and move it into her yard, see how long it'll stay, be there. Please have mercy on us. We don't have any place else to go. Please, please, please. If they haven't been to court or they're going to court, we're tired of hearing that. This is Mobile, Alabama. And I can't think of anything else to say. I've run out of my little time. Please, don't, if that RV is there, this is Thursday, I'm coming back, and I should have gone back on my job, but I came here, I stayed to come down here.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Small.
And Ms. Bivens?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for coming down to the city council meeting.
Yes, sir.
I might ask the administration if they can ask Mr. David to look into a note that you called 3131 last week with SRO numbers 901392 and 9013990. As you sat here at this long meeting, council meeting, you heard that the city attorney already threatened the council to put us in jail for interfering administration matters. So the issue that you have before us is really an administration issue because the council just passed the laws, the administration had to enforce the laws. So I'm gonna ask the administration to designate a certain person, probably Mr. David, that you can communicate with. You're more than welcome to come to council meeting every week. I welcome you to come, but again, we don't have the powers to enforce city ordinance. Only the administration has the authority to enforce city ordinance. But again...
The woman at 311 told me what she said, to go down, you gotta put your name on the list and this kind of thing, and so, but I hear you.
Yes, ma'am, but 311 works for the mayor, and the mayor, our employees work for the mayor. And so, the mayor is the CEO, and he hears you. So if there are any violations whatsoever, you know, the man's right there, and he has to designate his employees. But again, I'm gonna ask the administration, the mayor, if they can have Mr. David to talk to you about the situation. But again, you're more than welcome to come down here every week.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just want to give you...
Mr. Woods?
Councilman Small is right, it is illegal to give those kind of directives. And so, with that being said, Ms. Bivens? No, no, I can only address the chair. So, but my comments are...
You can have a seat in this building. Thank you for coming down.
I did want to ask Ms. Bivens if this was a junk car for Mobile because the new junk car ordinance would allow us to be able to move it.
It's an RV.
Well, mobile vehicle, even if it's an RV, if it's just junk, if it runs...
It runs.
If it runs, that's something different we'll have to talk about. No matter where it moves, no matter where it sits, we'll have to talk about making sure we go with enforcement. And so, we'll be moving forward with that and talking to the department. So, just so we're clear, I've not made any threats. I'm just telling you where this is going.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
I don't know. Go ahead, Mr. David.
Yeah, 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 thanks. And I think what you're talking about is, the question is this is an issue and where we are on that because it's an RV, and we hear you because you don't want to look at an RV. It probably takes up more space than the driveway. We have similar situations with big tractor trailers that park all over the city on weekends because they come in on a Friday night, they park over the weekend, and they leave Monday mornings. I get complaints from residents all the time, not just them, but me. I see... but me. I see them parked and I call it in. And it's very difficult for us to police it because it's generally on the weekends. Uh, but that's also a problem that we face. And I don't think I'm stepping on any toes. I tell you in defense of 311 that what they do is take your calls and take your information and then send it to the correct department. So that's what they are trying to do. They are, they are not a policymaker. They don't direct anybody. They, they are only sending your information to the correct department at that point.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Uh, any other commentary?
I would just like to-
Mr. Woods?
And I do hear you. Uh, Speaker made a good point on these RVs. Uh, I'm not sure if an operational RV is against the law. I don't, I don't know the law, I'm not a lawyer. I'll just tell you that you mentioned Lansdowne, that's in District Four, and about a half mile from there, we've been having an issue similar, very similar. So nobody's really left out. We haven't looked out your neighborhood to not, and I think I can speak for the administration on this, that's, that's perfectly within our rights, that where, there's, there's several issues. I have two in my district that come in and out and in and out and in and out. And so please don't think it's just your neighborhood that's not being looked at. Now, I can't tell you about Tuthill, but I can tell you about Lansdowne. Uh, and it's, uh, it's, let's say, experiencing its own difficulties with those kind of enforcements. Thank you.
And if I could comment. Um, it is a citywide problem for residents and also as Ms. Gregory mentioned, we're having like almost trucks in vacant parking lots, which is a real problem for, you know, people don't like that in neighborhood shopping centers. And I know I have, you know, tried to get that information through 311 and working with planning and, and zoning because that's a zoning violation. But I, to my knowledge, we don't have a zoning violation that talks to big trailers. We, we did talk among ourselves about people parking in front yards and having a code for that, which a lot of cities have. And it's really for aesthetics and making a community look better. But it is citywide. Believe me, I think all of us get these kind of calls from our, our constituents about it. And if it's a, if it's a truck or a vehicle that parks and is a business, actually the city has been very helpful to make sure that that business truck is not in an R1 situation or that they're parking it out front and leaving it overnight, you know, conducting their business from it, from their homes when that, that's not allowed. But we, we really have a lot of things we could be doing that would make things a lot better in, in order to get some aesthetics and, and improvements on the things that creating such frustration for you. But please don't leave here thinking you're the only neighborhood dealing with this. It's all.
Ms. Bivens, Ms. Bivens, I'm sorry. I can't allow that. I, I can't allow the back and forth. But, but again, I think your-
And I'm done.
Your commentary is noted. I believe the administration is gonna work on it and it's good. Uh, no, ma'am. What I was saying, no, ma'am, I'm sorry. And it's not personal. It's, it's not personally. You know, you're 15, 20 years. It's not that. I gotta follow the rules. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You're willing to speak with, yes, ma'am.
Vice President?
Mr. Mayor?
And Ms. Bivens. I'd like to make a comment that the, there have been, I'll wait till you, or you got the card. There have been ongoing challenges, not just with RVs, with junk cars and other issues like that. To the credit of the city council, the administration, enforcement of all this, we have, we have set the tone. There's nobody in the state of Alabama that has adopted a code like we adopted for junk cars. We were the first in the state. And so upon it being approved by the city council and following the, the order of sequence of us dealing with junk cars, we have now impounded, you know, several dozen cars. To my knowledge, there is nothing that gives us the, the right to do something about RVs. But if we find out that there is a way for us to do that, I can assure you that we will, we will get to the bottom of it. We will try to come up with something. But it's our understanding that we don't have the, the authority, the legal authority to do that. But you can follow up with Counselor Woods and, excuse me, Attorney Woods and he will be able to explain it to you. But if there is a pathway forward to help you solve this problem, it would solve problems all across the city, which there'd be a lot of people happy about.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, uh, Mayor.
I would like to come back to the, to the 18-wheelers park, either with or without the permission of the landowner on private property. And I'd like, like to get some help from the administration, understanding what the city's powers are currently to deal with that. If, I've, I've heard it's a zoning issue. If it's a zoning issue, then I guess it doesn't make any difference whether the owner's given permission or not, uh, because it's not a, it's not an 18-wheeler car park. And so if I, if, if, if we could, could get some, if we could get something in writing from the administration, letting us know what, A, what the city's powers are and B, how those powers get exercised, that would be very helpful.
We should be, we should get you something, but, but the short answer is it is a zoning issue and we are enforcing it. And we're enforcing it through dealing with the property owners. Say for instance, these grocery stores that have the parking lots, you know, we're dealing with enforcement through the actual owners. And a lot of times, it's not them letting somebody be there. But we have to push the owners to make the trespassers remove their vehicles when we're dealing with these large trucks and trailers.
Yeah. The largest problem, the, the, on, on Boulevard, there's a place where these people are parking. The land is owned by some nameless corporation up in Massachusetts or some, somewhere. And, and so how do we, how do we deal with that?
That's part, that's part of the complication right now. Law hadn't caught up with that. But we are pushing the actual, we are pushing the actual owners and dealing with the powers that we do have. We may have to look at amending to do more.
I, I think if there's anything the city council can do to address those, those issues, the issues we've talked about today, we'd be very interested in it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
It's been assigned to-
Yes, sir.
It's, it's been assigned to the police department. We'll take a look at available ordinances as they relate to large vehicles in residential area. So the police department's on it.
Thank you. Ma'am, City Clerk?
Wesley Young.
Let me say, uh, good, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Wesley Young. I reside at 358 Jane Street, Mobile, Alabama. I'm here this morning to thank this council for passing the investigation for the employees of public works. It is long overdue and always needs the truth. And we want to make sure that the investigation that takes place is independent and that's exactly what you all have done and the employees of public service. I really appreciate that. Uh, one other issue that I want to address is a comment that came from one of the council members on last Tuesday as relates to the employees are being turned against the mayor. I have no ill will against the mayor. I have never tried to turn employees against the mayor. That's not my style. That's not how I operate. And I want everybody on this council to know and I want the mayor to understand and know that as well. My job is to find solutions to problems. And there are many, many problems in public service. And if the mayor, if you would, please tell those that work in public service, that the interim director, as well as the department head, to stop intimidating these employees about this investigation. Late, there was a meeting with the director. In that meeting, he stated to some employees, what I'd like for them all to do is, when this investigation occurs, is to tell the truth. And so the employees referred back to him with this question. Mr. Director, if you want us to tell the truth, why don't you stop the person that's doing the damage and the disrespectfulness of us to stop doing that? And then we can be able to be able to all know the truth. And he said to that person, well, I don't have any to know that. And this young man responded, he said, well, I have it on my phone. You know what is responsible? Let's move to something else. That tells you about the person that you got in leadership. They are not concerned about the employees. They are concerned about the cover-up. But you know what? I put it in God's hand. He gonna fix this. When this investigation occurs and when it's over with, all of us gonna know the truth. It's everybody in this city gonna know the truth because this investigation's gonna uncover some things that you wouldn't have dreamed of. The employees are ready. They already have all the information they need for themselves. I have never tried to persuade them one way or another. The only thing I ever told the employee in this city is to tell the truth when the investigation occurs. That's all I'm gonna, I'm gonna, God will take care of the rest. Thank you.
Ordinance is, ordinance is held over 64029, rezoned property at 3703 Old Shell Road from R1 and L2, LB2. 64030, rezoned property 3262, Old Carline Street from R1 and B1 to B3.
So move.
Proper motion and second, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Gregory?
On 64029, the rezoning of the property of Old Shell and Whacker, that is the China Berry House that actually faces Old Shell Road. And if you're familiar with that house, it sits almost on top of the sidewalk. It is also in bad repair, or I should say it is in disrepair. And unfortunately, it has not been able to be sold to anyone who wished to make renovations for a single-family home. So before it could land on nuisance abatements, some potential property owners came forth and asked to buy it. But it will be, instead of a single-family home, then this zoning would give it the opportunity to be used for an LB2, which is basically limited business. Um, there have been some concerns about parking, especially on Whacker. So the city is now working toward putting up some marking signs on Whacker because it would be very difficult for anyone to pull out on Whacker onto Old Shell Road if cars are parked on either side of the road. So the city is doing that. Otherwise, what will go into the China Berry House, I don't think has been decided yet. If it has, I haven't been told. But I know there were some talks for some very light business sorts of things. Um, and I don't know if there's anyone here who, or who came forward during the planning commission, best to object to it. I think there were some questions about maybe lighting and parking and that sort of thing. So I know the city is, is looking at that. But otherwise, I don't have any objections to it because this will be able to maintain this home that is historic. It's on the historic register and it will certainly look a whole lot better as you're going down Old Shell Road when you see this house. So I would urge your support on this reason.
And if I could add, at the planning commission, it was made known that the, because the building is historic in nature-
Yeah.
-there's a lot of oversight-
Even more limitations.
...on what can happen to it in its renovation or, or repair phase. And there is more parking on site than is required by the square footage, too.
Yeah. So, so it really meets all the requirements and then some. And because as best pointed out, it is on the historic register. So that means there'll be even more restrictions placed on this particular building than under an LB2 zone.
Any further discussion? Mr. Richardson?
Um, the next one, 64030, uh, has to do with a B3 on Old Carline Street. This business is a budding neighborhood. Normally, that would, a B3 is commuter business, not neighborhood business. And a lot of things are allowed in B3 that would not be allowed in B2. So the applicant self restricted himself. He took those undesirables out. Uh, so, um, there's nothing contained in this retreat that would be detrimental to this neighborhood. So I have nothing against.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any further, uh, comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
84031, authorized issuance of tax-exempt general average refunding warrants.
Move layover one week.
Second?
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's laid over.
Resolutions held over 21790, authorized appropriation contract with Mobile, with County of Mobile for the purpose of assisting local small disadvantaged business owners in the construction field obtain insurance and bonding for projects through the microeconomic loan program.
So move.
I'll take them separate.
Second?
Who, who motion?
Mr. Dave.
Okay. Second, proper motion and second, any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
21792, authorized professional services contract with Mayor Steinfield to provide certain communication services for the Mobile City Council.
So move.
Second.
Proper motion and second, is there any discussion?
Real quick, I know we, we, we spend a lot of time, but for the record, on the vote, I'd like to say that in listening to the city council attorney, um, this is something that we can do. And I hope that the administration will work with this council to achieve this goal, this legislative act. And if there isn't to be a challenge, it would start, I imagine, from the mayor's office and, and, you know, we would be forced to defend ourselves, of course, on this action. But I'm hoping that it does not come to this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Rich. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The vote, uh, this motion, this agenda item passes with a vote of six in favor and one in opposition. Mr. Joe Days of District Five.
Joe Thomas Days.
Joe Thomas Days of District Five.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask for a roll call vote?
Negative.
Move.
Let's go. Next agenda item.
Next, next, next agenda item, there isn't any appetite for a roll call vote. I think it's pretty clear how we voted. Uh, ma'am, City Clerk?
31791, authorized mayor to apply, receive funding from the Department of Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
So move.
Second?
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions introduced, 37793 through 58795.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of 37, 3, uh, 37793, 9495 and 96.
It's not, 95.
95. Uh, what, what, no, but, but 96?
It's, no, it's consent resolutions.
But we have some, there's more than-
No, not on the consent. 377793 through 58795, consent resolutions.
Right.
Second on 783, 784 and 785.
I got, no, I see, I hate it. I went over on the other page, that CIP, that was CIP resolutions and I hate it. Consent resolution. Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of 37393 through 795.
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37793, recommended approval to the ABC board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Nixon's on Old Shell Road. 58794 and 795 are declaring weed's noxious and authorizing removal of weed's groups 1586 and 1583.
So move.
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21796 through 21798.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of 21796 and 97798, with layover for one week by council.
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? Uh, I want to speak specifically.
We gotta vote on that first before discussion.
Oh, pardon me, pardon. All in fa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I want to talk about 21796. I want to talk about 21796 specifically. Y'all got me all jumbled up here.
Needs to be read.
Okay, come on and read it first, Madam City Clerk, pardon me.
21796, authorized contract with Construction Corporation for Rickaby Park Basketball Court Fencing and Sidewalk.
So moved.
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? Yes, I'd like to discuss this basketball court fencing and sidewalk, we spent a great deal of resources trying to improve the amenities there at Rickaby Park, we will be adding the fencing, there will be nice sidewalks, so that we hopefully deter these big wheels, road vehicles, trucks, and things of that nature riding onto the basketball court. We're gonna really need the community's support in that effort. A lot of new amenities are coming to Rickaby Park, and this is upcoming fiscal year, we've got nearly $200,000 worth of playground equipment that will be there, something that has not happened in the community since the beginning of that park, so I'm appreciative of all the hard work of the administration, specifically Mr. Kimberly Harden, who really does work above and beyond to try to get all of these recreational CIP items onto the agenda and out the shoes, so that we can get them going. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01799 through 01801.
Councilor said. Councilor said, resolution will layover for one week.
Announcements?
Mrs. Gregory?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of announcements, I want to thank the members of the Mobile Terrace Community Development Corporation for their veterans on Saturday, they honored all of the veterans who live in the neighborhood, and a funny thing, a really unique thing that happened was that Chief wound up being the official photographer that day, so he was also recognized and credited for his support of the neighborhood as well, so it was a really invigorating day in Mobile Terrace, we had a wonderful crowd on hand to recognize all of these veterans, and I want to thank Joyce Chavers and all of her members in the group for what they do in the neighborhood. And just one other little item, I received a note from a woman who wrote me recently, I won't go into all the details, but the basic premise of her note was that because I've been sick, obviously, I'm not able to do my job, so I want to tell her that that is not the case. I have missed two meetings due to surgery, one was in April, one was this past week, so any thoughts or rumors of my demise, or that I am on death's doorstep, or anything else, are greatly exaggerated, just want everybody to know that, I am here, and I am still the voice of District Seven, and will continue to be that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Amen.
Let the church say amen.
Glad to have a voice, the voice of District Seven. All right, thank you, Madam, Mrs. Gregory, Mrs. Rich.
Oh, thank you. This Saturday, at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, there'll be a quilted dollar presentation at 9:00 AM, and again, you saw that in council last week, and this will be for many more military service veterans, again, at the Connie Hudson Senior Center. The November 29th is a district meeting, and I appreciate having Public Safety Director Jimmy Barber present, and our chief, and the other Mobile MPD personnel that they would like to bring to the neighborhood meeting, or district meeting, we'll also talk about the Greelot Road beautification, with the Alabama Urban Forestry Association helping to pull that together. December 7th, there's a Christmas holiday breakfast, and that is also at the Connie Hudson Senior Center on Hillcrest, also, December 7th, same place, at 8:30 is the District Six Holiday and Christmas Breakfast, I hope everyone will come out who goes up to that center, and you'll notice that it was a first read, so rested, but the splash pad and restroom room minutes, and I thank the administration and everybody involved who got it to this point, it's two years of budgeting items and cobbling things together, and I look forward to that coming on board for the summer session this coming year, if everything goes as planned. Again, that will be voted on next week, and we'll also have those plans out at the district meeting as well. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, the city council finance committee will meet at 2:00 PM in the city council conference room, this is an open meeting, all are welcome to attend, we will be considering refunding a certain portion of the city's long-term debt, we will, that item was on the agenda today, and must carry it over for another week, so that we could have the benefit of this finance committee meeting this afternoon, the city's financial advisor will be there to talk about the possible refunding and the syndicate that we'll be putting in together. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to announce a very important meeting coming up Thursday evening, at 6:00, it's going to be the Midtown Community Meeting, that meeting will be held at the Ashesville Place United Methodist Church on the corner of O'Shell, 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 we're asking all of the citizens in the Midtown area to please come out, that is always a jam-packed meeting, and I expect nothing less, Thursday night, we're going to talk about the CIP programs, and a lot of progress is coming to District One, and we also want to hear from the citizens in the Midtown community, I want to hear from you, and we have a lot of city executives coming that may be able to answer some of the, have the answer to some of the issues that you raise, if you heard this council today, you found out that we can't get involved in administrative matters, and then I don't intend to, and I don't take no issue to blight, anything pertaining to blight belongs to the mayor and his administration, but so I invited a person to come who could address blight. But anyway, I expect a live in the meeting, please meet me at the Ashesville Place United Methodist Church this Thursday, starting at 6:00. Thank you.
Mr. Small?
Thank you, President. Manzi, I'd like to say to my colleague, Mrs. Gregory, according to that statement you made earlier, just remember that the devil stay busy, that his job is to kill, steal, and destroy, and don't let the devil steal your joy, because he is a liar.
All right now.
This coming Thursday, November 15th, the Odell Community Action Group is having its annual pre-Thanksgiving luncheon, which will be held at 11:30 AM at the Taylor Park Recreation Center, which is located on Baltimore Street, inviting all of the members of the Odell Community Action Group, and also the residents of the Odell community to come out this coming Thursday at 11:30 AM for the annual pre-Thanksgiving luncheon. Every year, it gets better and better, and have some old ladies come out with their fire cooking, you know, no store-bought stuff, again, that will be this coming Thursday at 11:30 AM. And also, District Three, remind you of our district holiday celebration, which will be held on Monday, December 10th, at the Maryvale Elementary School, starting at 6:00 PM. We invited several schools in the district to come out and perform for the community, every year it gets bigger and bigger and bigger, last year, we almost ran out of room at Pillman's Middle School, so therefore, I moved it to Maryvale Elementary School because of the response, and again, I will be sending postcards in the next couple of weeks, that will be on December 10th at 6:00 PM, followed by our big district celebration, our parade of threes on December 15th, coming down DIP at 2:00 PM. Thank you, Vice President, for this moment.
Mr. Williams? Nevermind, thank you. I want to announce that we will be having a District Two Community Meeting, number 54, at the St. Joseph Missionary Baptist Church on Broad Street, 661, South Broad Street, 36603, that's tonight at 6:00, looking forward to having representatives of the administration present, so that they can hear directly from citizens, and also hopefully let us continue to chart a course for our very successful CIP program. This same church, the St. Joseph Missionary Baptist Church, will be hosting their inaugural Community Thanksgiving Dinner, and that will be located at, again, 661, South Broad Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36603, it's for food and family, and for more information, 251-432-4933, Reverend Leon Bell, pastor, Sister Marilyn, Eze Ellis, the mission president, you're certainly welcome to go on November 22nd, and I believe on Wednesdays, if I'm not mistaken, from, is it 10, 10 to 2, you can go to the Rehoboth Baptist Church, right there in the heart of District Two, every Wednesday, they have a feeding ministry, Dr. West and his wife and others have really been putting on for a number of years, quite impactful in our community, so if before this great Thanksgiving Dinner, you need a meal, you can go tomorrow from 10 to 2 at the Rehoboth Baptist Church, if you don't mind, will you give me your address, Dr. West?
1320.
1320 Center Street, 1320 Center Street, and I want to publicly commend him, Sister West, and all other members of Rehoboth, they've been really the spearhead of this for many years, and I'm appreciative of what you do, I'm appreciative for your steadfastness, to even stay as long as you stayed, many would have prayed and left, as you see, we are still in need of continued prayer, so-
Thanksgiving Dinner, everybody, is next Wednesday from 10 to 2.
Thanksgiving Dinner at Rehoboth, next Wednesday, from 10 to 2, reason to be hungry around here, go and eat, you got some great food at all of these great churches, thank you, in fact, I'm forgetting something, I'll wait for next week, if there is a next week, thank God for each and every one of you, any further comments from the council? Do I hear a motion? Any comments from the administration? Not, do I hear a motion? Proper motion and second, any discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.